All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda are approval of minutes. I've accepted a motion to approve the minutes from the September 23rd school board meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks Erin, can we get a second?
Second.
Thanks Tony.
About September 13th.
Did I say 23rd? Sorry.
Okay. You know what Matt.
September 23rd, correction. Any comments, discussion, corrections? I didn't see any either. On favor, aye? Aye, oppose? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Thanks Matt. And we're going to non-public, Judy first?
Yes, I have a non-public.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me. Actually, it says Matt was present last week.
I was not here. Sure. Just get a quick in on that frame.
I didn't catch that.
I didn't either. So we are going to go into non-public RSA 91-8:3, number 2C, to avoid harm to the reputation of employee. Correct.
Yes, yes.
Yes. John? Do non-public.
Yes.
All right, so continuing, next item on our agenda is communication, correspondence. We did get a letter, sorry Judith got a letter, from an employee discussing complaints against a board member. So during new business later on tonight, we will not go over the letter complaint, but we'll go over policies that maybe involve board members and ethical practices and their powers and authorities. So next on our agenda is-
I have one more correspondent. I just received this correspondence from the Hampshire School Boards Association to let everyone know that October 4th, which is next Wednesday, is a Brad Kidder Law Conference, which administration, superintendents, EAs, whatever, and as well as board members are invited to attend. And it's $150, but if anyone wants to attend, it's an all-day thing, it's at the Capone Center in Plaza. If anyone wants to attend, just let us know and we'll register you for that conference. It's every year, so.
Okay. Thanks Judy. Deb, do you have a report? I know our auditors are here.
Yeah, the auditors are here. Today's day one of three, they'll be here today, tomorrow, and Friday. So far, just been busy. I did put in the year-end financial reports in the packet, so I don't know if you were able to go through it, but there's four reports in there, and I can go through them, and if you have any specific questions. The first report I have in there is just a summary of the general fund, major revenues and expenses, that I usually present each year. So the top part of that report on page one is just a summary of the major revenues and any differences budget versus actual. Catastrophic aid and vocational transportation are two pieces of state aid that we get, and they tell us when we're setting our revenues, this is what you should budget. So there's usually some variances, and they were on the favorable side. A plus on the revenue side is favorable, negative is unfavorable. So on the top part, the changes in revenue mainly due to the catastrophic aid and vocational transportation was about $10,000 favorable. The biggest piece of our revenue is our local taxes. So, and I'll go over a little bit on the revenues in a later report. The bottom part of the report, or the rest of the report, is all of our major expenditure lines, and I pretty much sort it what we would call object code by salaries, health insurance, electricity, books, software, things like that. So these are our major expenditure lines in the budget, and the variance is budget versus actual. Again, on the expenditure side, if it's a negative or in brackets, it means it was higher or less favorable than budget. If you have any specific questions on any of the lines, I can answer those. The biggest, one of the bigger favorable, I guess, when you look at our out-of-district tuition transportation, we had budgeted 300, almost 350,000, and we only used 215,000 of those lines. We did have a number of placement changes. Remember, we set our budget this time of year for the following year, so there are normally changes in almost every line item, you know, there's a lot of pluses and minuses, but that was a big change. We did have two or three different placement changes over the course of the year. So that was $135,000 on the favorable side. When you look at like PT and OT, that was a negative, but some of those placement changes required maybe more services in-house if we brought some of the students back. Heating oil, favorable. We had a lower rate than what we budgeted, plus we used less gallons. It was about $20,000 less than the prior year, what we spent in heating oil. Electricity, same thing, mainly some rate and kilowatt hour, number of kilowatts used. It was about 3,000 less than the prior year. These are versus budget, but I also like to go back and see where we were in the prior year. Our legal expenses were higher than budget. We had negotiations and just our general legal budget was higher than budget. You'll see on the next side, I think I double-sided this report for you. We did not use the money for the school resource officer. We also had $10,000 left in contingency. Capital projects, we had a number of capital projects last year. We had the regular flooring replacement project, we had the gym floor and bleachers. We had part of the high school roof, we also had the rest of the locker room project. So all in all, our changes in expenses were about $279,000 versus budget on the favorable side. Again, most of that, well, not most, $135,000 of that was from the special ed, out-of-district costs and changes in placements. So when you look at your changes in expenses and your changes in revenues, you get your unassigned fund balance, or your surplus, of $289,000 for the year. We put $100,000 voted to go into the trust funds. And then, back in 2014, I think, the district had voted on the retention, the fund balance retention law that was put into place, which allows school districts to keep up to 2.5% of any, it's actually based on a formula based on their net assessment for the new year. So we've been holding back a little bit of our unassigned fund balance that goes back to the towns. We could legally hold up to about 175,000. I was just recommending just putting in 100. We can save that, that's really saved for emergencies. If we had a roof issue or a boiler issue or something, something that was unplanned, so you wouldn't have to go and have a special meeting. So we've been using between 100 and $150,000 of any leftover balance and keeping that, and then the balance would go back to the towns. So that's our general fund. The next report I have in there is on our food fund, our food service fund, which is a separate fund. So I have a lot of history there, it's the longer sheet. So it shows our food, our biggest expenses, our food service management, which is Cafe Services running our food service program. This year, we actually had a little bit less of a negative balance than we normally do have. It's about $8,000, we had budgeted about 15,000. So basically, we look at our costs, which is running the cafeteria, and then we look at our revenues, based on our daily, our regular food sales, the free and reduced reimbursements that we get from the federal government. We have a grant, the fresh fruits and vegetable grant. And again, we've seen this trend of our regular food sales going down as our free and reduced federal reimbursements going up. We do have about 47% of our students are on free and reduced meals. We are, this year, actually today, I think, we started a new program at the elementary school called Breakfast After the Bell, which will hopefully increase our breakfast numbers. So they come into school, they come off the playground, and they have breakfast ready for them in the classroom. So hopefully, we'll see that our revenues go up a little bit for that.
When did, did that start, right at the beginning of the school year?
It started today, actually. We just got all the paperwork out at the beginning of the school year, but today was the first official day. So, you know, it's a small operation, it's hard to really make money on the food service program, but we do, you know, work with Cafe Services to try to keep any negative balances down there. The next reports are our trust fund reports. So I have a report of all of our trust funds for where we ended up for 2016, '17 year. And you can see, you know, beginning balances, what we put in, what we spent down below. There's the detail of what we spent in each of the funds. What we actually spent is what came out of the funds. I have a column there that just shows what was voted versus what we spent. And then our ending balance at the end of June. And if you go to the next page, you have the new school year. So our beginning balance, July 1st of this year, what we will be putting into the trust funds, that $100,000 that was voted, those are the deposits in the second column. I haven't done that yet because I was just waiting to get through the audit, and we're going through the tax rate setting process right now, so it's all done at the same time. What we spent so far, what we voted so far for this year, for the trust fund, so you can see your ending balances. And then the last two pages, I'll double-side in your packet, but it's just called the school district profile. And this report comes out of the state reports that I send each year. And the first one is our school district profile for the 2016, '17 school year, and the second one is for the prior year, the 2015, '16. It's just a good check and balance, you know, to see if there's any irregularities or anything that jumps out, you know, from year to year. It shows our cost per pupil for each year, and as you see with a lot of smaller school districts like ours, our cost per pupil is a lot higher than the state average. And a lot of that has to do with, we have smaller class sizes, but we also have fixed costs that you can't absorb with a small base. You know, a bigger school can absorb some of those fixed costs that you're going to have no matter what size your district is. So you tend to see a higher cost per pupil in smaller school districts. So that's the first part, and then the rest is just a snapshot of how the state looks at our financials, based on what they call the major functions. We all have a common chart of accounts, so when they're looking at our school district versus another school district, it's sorted out this way. And then I like to look at not only the dollars, but the percentage year-to-year shift, if there are any shifts between the lines. We don't have any major shifts, but sometimes you see, like we did have, actually, our special ed percentage went down a little bit, our regular ed percentage went up a little bit from one year to the next. And then the bottom part just shows the revenues broken down, the way the state likes to look at it. Now, I look at it a little bit differently. When you look at your total revenues and you look at that local property tax line, and you look at the state foundation adequacy line, that's really all local money. That's all money that's raised locally and stays here for our schools. So that's about 92% of our revenues are from local taxation, or about 6.8 million of our revenues are local. Then we have some federal grants, and we have some other state aid, like catastrophic aid, vocational transportation, things like that. And that is, and that is it.
Thanks for putting that together Deb.
Does anyone have any questions? And if you have any questions, you know, ask anytime, want any more details.
Thanks Deb. All right, I just ask, I don't know whose it is, because you guys silence your phones. That whistling noise, is that you? Just put on vibrator or something, thanks. Judy.
Okay, I just wanted to let the board know that the school district clerk position is open. At this time, that is an appointed position, and so that has been posted, and as soon as people come forward, we'll bring it to the board. We do have an educational focus coming up tonight. The biomass committee did meet and has another meeting scheduled next week, so I'll let the committees, Brian-
Yeah, you can do it.
-add that information. We do have a process that we need to follow for the school properties disposal procedure. If you see in that, I know we have a, we have a, some property to be disposed of.
Yeah.
And also, just to let you know, that we recently had a request from White Mountain Regional High School in helping them transport students from White Mountain Regional High School to Littleton, the two vocational programs, which we do for our own students. We have students bring them to White Mountain Regional, and then some of them go to Littleton. They did not have enough room on their bus to transport eight students. So they asked if we could transport eight students for them. We've done that in the past, and however, you have to go through a process, and you have to call the attorney, and then you have to call the insurance company, and there has to be a letter of agreement. And so that was all done. And the students are identified, there's a written permission from the parent, and the process is followed. So just to let you know, that that's something that we do, you know, for districts, just like if we would need that, they would do that for us too. It's no extra money, it's just for drawing students from where the bus would go, and typically, it would be from White Mountain Regional.
It's going there anyway, right?
It's going there anyway. No extra, yeah. Not taking them to a place else, not taking them home, not doing anything. And that's it. Oh, the middle high school schedule. Middle high school schedule, we usually typically pass out every fall, at the end of September. At the beginning of the year, there's a two-week waiting period where students can schedule their, or change, and their schedule around. So within those two weeks, the numbers are not accurate. They're not solid. These are all the numbers. If there are any courses that have, that have two numbers, then the, I mean, if you have a block that has two numbers in it, one's for the first semester and one's for the second semester, or semester one of those. For example, H E, you see that, you see that, trouble, you see it under TV as well. Now, I may have said this is middle school, this is just the high school schedule. But you'll see some of them have the middle school, you know, some of you K through 12, are, their schedule's in here as well, because they do middle school and high school, so that's where that comes in.
In the future, and I know this means next year, this would be, for me personally, this would be helpful in the packet, because there's a lot of information here to go through.
Right, right.
But, I mean, just at first glance, I think the numbers look better than I remember them from previous years, as far as the number of kids consistently in some classes.
Typically, it does go in the packet, but we just got the information.
Okay. I would agree, it is a lot of information.
But yeah, it is. It just takes a while to, I would say, look at it, and if there are any questions or concerns, and certainly bring up the next meeting.
So I would say, do you want to go ahead and put that on continuing business?
Sure.
And then if people have questions over the next two weeks? There's just a lot to ask us to look at it now and ask questions. And we can address any possible questions next time. Okay. Scott.
Thank you. Just a couple of items, Deb already mentioned really, the normal shield, beginning of the Breakfast After the Bell program. And with working with Cafe Services, just wanted to give the board just a reminder, we have a teacher-in-service day coming up on Friday, October 6th. That's also part of their, as far as like the National NEA Day, where they have some different events going on. But we're going to be planning, you know, kind of what our professional development is going to be like over the next couple of days, going into next week. And also, just, you know, on September 20th, so obviously last, obviously last Wednesday, we had our open house with sessions for both elementary school and the middle high school. It was, we thought we were very happy with our, the attendance, and tried to make a note of, you know, to your parents and community members who were there, both last Wednesday, but moving forward, that it was very well attended. We had, we were able to, you know, while we're there, parents had the opportunity to kind of, you know, obviously just meet the teachers and see classrooms, but it was able to kind of start, begin the rollout for teachers, excuse me, for parents to sign up for, who have the school access. And it's opened the parent portal, so parents now have access to be able to go into and see how the child is doing, and where their grades are at. We have not opened it yet for student access. We got some feedback from students, kind of wondering why we went parents first, students second. We thought it was kind of more important to have our parents be able to see their child's grades first. So a little spike in anxiety a little bit for our kids for a few days, but it wasn't a bad thing. That's what I have for this evening.
Thanks Scott. Any questions for Scott?
Thank you.
Judy, can we maybe do the ed focus before we get to, you know, Brian's probably got a lot for policy and, I mean, for-
No, we don't have a lot.
All right, let's just stick with it. Brian, what do you have for us for facilities?
This is just the minutes from the previous meeting, it's also the minutes from the biomass committee, I'll just touch on that quick. We got the report, we got to sit down yesterday morning, and put it in everybody's hands. I think it needed time to, for people to look it over, so we have another meeting with that group, that subcommittee, on Tuesday at nine. And I think we just asked, you know, if everybody looks through and find any kind of bullet points, things that stick out to them from that report, to kind of like, to help us kind of drive into a focused lane on this project. So I'll have more information about that next time. Although it was good that everybody had some good input, I should say, you know. It's cool to have some good people on there, to be with Alan and Mike and Stuart from the public, you know, it's a big help, so. Today, we just had our meeting, and I'll just hit the list quick, there's nothing, the biomass thing off to the side. Projects are moving along, we're waiting on a bid for a, for some of more of the communication systems that we have been waiting on, there's not much change there at this point. We got to look over a more updated, what's that word for that? A list of stuff?
Master plan.
But as far as big projects, kind of like the same stuff we've been talking about, we're just kind of in limbo, waiting for some things to come in. Some things are getting done. It's really nothing, it was pretty uneventful as far as, there was more review of past it.
Yeah.
Nothing new came out of it, so I'd feel comfortable leaving it.
Okay. I had one question. I don't know if it's for Brian or Judy. And I remember talking about it, at the August 23rd meeting, you guys had mentioned that the signs for that. It's not a handicap parking lot, it's handicap accessible. We've ordered those, are those in yet?
Yes, they are non-in yet.
Okay.
But they should be in shortly.
Okay.
It just takes a while for them, having them specially made.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian or any other members of the committee? Neither committee's meet the last, over the last couple of weeks. I know we have some policy later, but-
Wellness. Wellness met.
Oh, Wellness did meet. Got the email, I can never make it to those meetings.
Yeah, Kristin can go. Why? The wellness meeting? Yes, I was gonna do it. You want me to report on that?
I was just stating, I'm the rep, but it's always at 2:45 and I can't make it.
Yeah.
So, I know.
I think I'm on that committee as well.
Oh, are you?
I think it's you. I think you're not on anyone.
Did you get an email? Make sure you're on the email list to-
I still get the emails that are happening.
I don't know.
We'll double-check.
Okay.
I'll double-check it. Would you like to give the report?
If you would, if you'd like to.
Can you remember?
Okay. I typically like to plan what I'm going to say. The Wellness Committee met, we discussed that there are some changes, you can talk about this part, there were some changes to the lunch program, which will impact our policy, so we will be looking at our policy to make sure that it's lining up. It will need a few tweaks to line up with the state. We also discussed middle school hiking day in October 27th, and high school hike day for October 20th. And lumberjack give-back 5K run will be on Sunday, if people would like to participate in that. That's a booster club thing with a wellness thing. And, I think, that was about it. Yeah, that was it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I step back for a minute? On the, when were the signs ordered for out back? Was that recent?
We have talked about it at the last, it's in the last meeting.
About a couple of weeks ago.
That was discussed, that they were ordered. So it'd have to be prior to two weeks ago.
Well, it says on August 23rd, minutes, it says they have been ordered, so. Yeah. They've been on order, that's why I questioned, do we have them? It's been ordered.
I questioned it too.
Okay.
Just wanted to say one more thing. Because it changed you guys, the only thing that really I think came up that was important at that meeting was, we discussed about this walkway lighting, that was approved back in the beginning of June, and then it was brought up again, and it was supposed to be done by the 25th. So we kind of came to the conclusion, is it, do they have to, we just want to get them either to move forward, or it might be time to look at going to somebody else, you know?
Okay.
Because there was, I know to everybody, it was a critical point about the safety of walking in that thing, and it was supposed to be done before school, and that was clear. If it's, the contractor can't get it done, then maybe we have to look at going to another contractor instead of just waiting it out.
Yep.
That was the only big one.
I can look at that.
Okay. Any other committees before you go to Judy? All right Judy, you have a data report for us?
Yes.
Okay, the easiest way to look at this, excuse me, is-
Is there a, do you mean to pass this to the public, or I just want to get?
Yes, yes.
Is there any? Okay. Pass it up to the show. There's no students.
That's all right, that's all right. So the easiest way to look at this is, this is about the, first of all, the state testing results. They're done every spring, grades three through eight and grade 11. Grade 11 does the SATs, which are the college boards, and grades three through eight have taken the Smarter Balance assessment, and this was the last year Smarter Balance was going to be given, and we're not sure which one is going to be given in the spring of next year. So it's another test, different test. So looking at this, the front page is just giving you the number, the percentage of students at each level, and your first two numbers, for example, blue, your first two numbers, the top one and the middle one will always be the same in this report, so you don't, it's district, it's school, and they're both the same, okay? So the blue is the highest level, and then it goes to the green, which is your proficient. And then, the yellowish is your- the yellowish is your. So you have partially proficient and then the one that's below grade level.
So which, wait a minute, so, so blue is what? Blue is below grade level?
No, blue is just. Green would be like your level three, super proficient. Yellow is partially proficient, level two. And then level one is substantially below proficient. So we flipped the right.
Gotcha, thank you. So it's, it's just a confusing heading.
It is.
It gives if, well, there's no key, yeah, the, the untrained eye might look at and say, well fifteen percent of our kids scored a fifteen or less. But it's going percentages of students, not percentages of scoring.
Correct. So if you look at the second page, the second page highlighted the numbers that you could be looking at, they're the same numbers, but it's easier to read. Grade three, your math is fifteen percent was in level four, thirty percent is in level three. And I didn't do level two and one for highlighting, but I just did level four and level three. So your top number is your public school, the elementary, which is three through eight anyway. And your state between the two scores, those are the ones I highlighted. So I highlighted your school and your state.
Just, this would be another thing that would have been good on Friday.
Well, this is going to take a while to, to digest anyway, I'd rather explain it personally than digest it.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's fine.
We just got, literally just got this last week, the secret code came in last week. It wasn't allowed to the public until this past Monday. Okay, on the next page, it, it, the shorter page, yeah, that, those are, that's grade eleven.
This one?
Yes. So again, this would be something I would be putting on the agenda for the following meeting.
Okay.
Because this information literally just came out on this past Monday, they, they looked at the embargo. And they left it public.
I, I would suggest, unless someone's got really important questions they want to ask now, you know, let's put that on continuing also and give people time to absorb the data and ask any questions that they may have.
I have, well, I have some questions, I'm gonna ask them now because I'll forget, but I know you don't know the answers, so. But when I look at this, there's, there's some flags, right? Okay, so I guess what I'd like to know, and I'm not sure that we do this or have done this in the past, but do we ever take these numbers and do overlays for certain grades with attendance, tardiness, free and reduced lunch, and see if any of?
There's a code, there's six cohorts that we have to go by. One of them's attendance, one of them ethnicity, one of them socio-economic, one of them special ed, you know, identifications and all of the identifications within special ed. And, and you have, you have to divvy it all out, break it all down, analyze it.
So do you break that by grade? Do we know how many kids do, so do we know a child's score and where they score, and do we know if they receive free or reduced lunch? I know we know that, we know if they have an IEP, do we know if they had preschool, do we know?
We don't know if they've had preschool.
Tardiness, anything like that?
We know tardiness, we know absenteeism, we do not know preschool.
I, I, the, the only reason I ask is because there's, there's clearly disruptors to achievement outside of this building. And when you have such a small school, a small population, things can get skewed. But there's, I mean, there's some numbers here.
Absolutely.
The, the other thing is, when you look at those numbers being a percentage, is that, you know, being a smaller, for each classroom.
That's what.
One kid is sick that day and it's.
But I guess, I'd like to know too, I mean, do we have a plan to, I mean, I know you identify trends, but you identify, you know, the gaps with any particular student, where to fill those gaps, and then what are we doing, but, you know?
We also do, because this test is given once a year, and there are some factors that could lead to some of the scores. And for example, even using a computer and, and pressing the wrong button, or getting the mouse in a certain area, and it was a wrong area, and it didn't get it right into a certain area, and you press a button and it gave not the right answer. So there are idiosyncrasies that do happen, but besides that, yes, we have, we are looking at that now, since we just got the scores. The teachers have already started their own assessments, remember, we have a local assessment called the NWEA, which is the Northwest Educational Assessment, and that is more, that's standardized to a local area, so this, each, each school district in the state is required to have some type of local standardized test, and that is given three times a year in elementary and twice in middle school and high school. What we do look at is the target group that those students made, and this could be where you're coming from.
I would like to see.
If you can, yeah, we, we, and we.
Without names, obviously, but.
Right, we can, we can report out on last, we'll report out next time on last year's, on that W, NWEA, because that's kind of interesting to look at. Because when a student comes into a grade level, they're measured by the amount of growth they made from the beginning of that year to the end of that year. Even if they didn't match this, they could have, they could have increased by two grade levels in one year.
Right.
But it's not going to show on this one, you know, so if you have students coming into the district at two years below kindergarten level, without knowing letters or numbers, you start them where they're at, you don't start them assuming they don't know. So, so if they went from kindergarten to first grade and just learned their numbers, they've technically really grown two years in the one year. You know what I mean, depending on what the skill is and the, and the skill requirement of that year. So, and we do have a test that does measure the individual student growth rates, and that's what the state is, was leading towards when they were starting with the, the individual student learning objectives, was to have them be measured, have personalized learning and have them be measured separately rather than as a group. So if you have a low group that's coming in, we've already established what groups those are and what students they are, then we'll start, we'll start them where they begin, where they come into, but we'll, you know, try and move them forward.
Yeah, it's, I mean typically you see certain grades that are strong, and they're strong throughout, and there's a couple in here, but there's, there's some clustering of grades here that.
And we also follow the student, the group going up, these are a different group every year for the grade. So, but we, so when we're looking at it, one way of looking at it is looking at the curriculum and the programming, if you're looking at the grade. If you're looking at the student, then you need to follow the student from grade three to four to five to six, and we have individual student reports that we look at to see if there's growth.
I'd be interested in seeing that, if, if we can, obviously with the names redacted, I, I think that would be, have some value to it.
Yeah. There's several different ways of looking at it, only that we only have like a few days to get it, I, we just wanted to, you know, but there's, there's a lot of different. Yeah, yeah, this is very general.
Very general.
And you won't be able to compare this to something next year, because smarter balance is not going to be given next year.
Right.
So whatever, whatever you do this year, you won't be able to compare those numbers to certain of this, because it'd be comparing apples and oranges.
Yeah, I think that's where the individual growth will be.
So the local assessment could definitely be more important.
I mean, are there, are there trends that you as administrators are seeing in the classrooms as far as, I don't know, more, you know, kids in need of things that aren't education based? Is there more of that, or is it, is it normal for what, you know, are there kids that need snacks?
Yeah.
I, I know there's, we always have that, but is there more of that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Are they coming in with more, or walking in with less?
Yeah, as time has gone on, I think as, as the years have kind of rolled by, the amount of things that are not what you would see in a teacher or educator's job description that they need to provide for a kid to be successful has increased.
And that's throughout all schools.
And that's throughout all schools. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it does, yeah, it's helpful, it's just.
Any other questions about the report? Alright, we're gonna move on to policy.
So if you do have, if you do have a chance before the next meeting to do some of those overlays, I, I know it's, it might be a lot of work.
No, that's alright.
But if you can, I mean, I'd be interested, particularly with, with the individual growth.
Yep.
If we can see, you know, different overlays as far as attendance, like, you know, because there's all sorts of things that may impact that. Thank you.
Good, okay.
No, wait.
Alright, so moving on to policy, we have JJE dash R and EH, those are in your packets. EH has been changed due to law and Policy Committee has finally put together a JJE dash R that we can look at tonight. Tony, do you want to go through it a little bit?
Sure, I think most of the changes have been on there floating around for quite some time, this policy's been, been looked at for two years.
Yes.
You know, so we, we, I mean, some of the dates have changed as far as removing dates up, you know, to, to try to give these classes who are planning for a class trip some more goal setting, as far as our fundraising goes, some target dates to work for, to kind of free them up more on their senior year. I think the big changes you'll find are on the backside, you know, all the stuff in bold that has been added in, and I think, you know, the one thing that's, was the big talking point was whether or not to add a dollar cap for students as far as fundraising goals go, and there were different numbers floated around, different people on this, that number you see there is kind of where we landed in the middle amongst everybody's ideas. And we said, well, let's, let's put that on there and bring it to the full board for discussion, see where everybody feels on that. And, you know, we kind of came to that number not just by, like I said, if people had different opinions of numbers, it wasn't just by throwing a number out there, we asked for data from the last five years of trips to see where the averages were and what made sense. And that's where we're at at the moment. So if anybody has any questions about that.
Just one that stuck out to me is the number six on the back.
Yeah.
Isn't that not what this one is, or did I miss it on the trip that they're doing?
The, the one, this policy won't go into effect until.
Till next.
Yeah, it won't affect the current season.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no.
So, thank you guys for all your work. I, you know, I appreciate, there's, there's some things that I really appreciate, I think that the language is much more effective in this, in this policy that you brought forward. It's, I'm glad to see ratios of students to chaperones or some, some sort of guideline with that. The question that I have, and, and one of the things that I wrestled with personally throughout this process, is personally I feel if, if we're gonna have a travel agent, and I know, I know the concerns, I know why people might want a travel agent, I know administratively it's a, a lot less of a burden, it makes things cleaner. If we're gonna have a travel agency involved, I personally would not want to see a cap, because I think it's more expensive. I don't know what, I don't know the percentage that they take. So for me personally, I would, if, if, if the group were willing to amend it anyway, for me it would be to either remove the use of a travel agency or remove the cap, and have one or, one or the other, as opposed to having both. That's my own personal feeling on that.
Is the cap necessary?
I can take my thought on, I, I didn't have a horse in the race, so to speak, administration gave us some figures last time we met, since two thousand and fourteen. So, two thousand and fourteen, senior class trip cost per, per student that went, one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars apiece. So over thirteen hundred dollars per student, and they got twelve out of twenty-five students who went, which is forty-eight percent, that's not a class trip.
Right.
That's, they didn't even have fifty percent.
That was fourteen?
Two thousand and fourteen. Two thousand and fifteen, the cost per pupil who went was one thousand and thirty-six dollars. They got seventy-three percent, or twenty-two out of thirty who went. The next year, two thousand and sixteen, it was one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars per student who went, and they got twenty out of thirty, or sixty-seven percent of the kids who went. Last year and this year, the nut, the price per student is incredibly low, and last year it was two hundred and eighty-seven dollars per student. Judy said twenty out of twenty-three, which is eighty-seven percent, but I remember Sally Nichol saying last year that a hundred percent went.
Hundred percent.
So, so at a hundred percent attendance, it was two hundred and eighty-seven dollars per student. And this year, which they haven't gone yet, it's four hundred and sixty-five dollars per student, and I think when we last met, Bobby had said they had twenty out of twenty-four currently signed up, so if it's just twenty out of twenty-four, that's eighty-three percent. So for me, when I took those numbers, I was okay with a cap, because the lower the price for the trip, the more students we got. And to me, our goal was sending the kids off on a class trip with as many students as possible, I mean, sixty-seven percent, forty-eight percent, even seventy-three percent, it's, it's not a whole class trip. So I would like to see everyone go if possible, I know there's always circumstances where someone's not going to go for family or religious or just interest reasons, but last year and this year, to me proved that a low trip gets more kids, and that's important to me.
So you, is that because it's more affordable? I mean, it's all funded, it's money, right?
Well, they raise, they raise less money, so they do less things, I would assume, right?
Right, but more people are going.
I mean, if you listen, if you listen to this year's senior class trip, they are doing a lot of stuff.
But it would show me two week classes that didn't work well together to raise lots of money. It seems to me that median should be around a thousand if you get a set one, but I mean, that's.
I mean, I'd be interested to see, when you spend a thousand plus per kid and you're going to Florida or California, once you get there, what are you doing? Because that's a huge cost just to get there.
Just a quick example.
Matthew had said, like, if we had applied this to this class, would it have been able to be pulled off with a travel agent?
I don't know.
Right, and those other.
You know, they're pretty, they're four sixty-five, they're, they're right in the realm of the six hundred dollar range, and now if we, if we, just thinking about it, because if we added the thing, would it, is that feasible?
Like, that can't be everything though, right, and this year senior class trip, four sixty-five was the sound they could offer, two vans, a beach and the condo and the house.
Those are the numbers the class applied at.
Because a van's about a grand a week, huh?
I just think that one's close, like.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to, I personally, I don't want to go back and dissect everything.
No, I understand, if I agree with Matt, you have one or the other.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to, I feel like it's, you know, I said it before, it's kind of like bell dance suspenders, and, and the thing with policies is they can always be changed. But to go to six hundred and then possibly after two nights having to have a travel agent to some classes, and I know that, I mean, fifteen hundred bucks, but sixty-seven percent went, a thousand bucks, seventy-three percent went, I mean, that's not terrible, some people are going to self-select not to go. I just personally would prefer one or the other, and I don't care which one it is, but I don't want a double handicap.
Right.
Potential, that's all.
No, just back to the, the math part of it, so they're saying that they're gonna take, I think it was twenty students this year.
That's what, was that, two weeks ago, yeah?
For a total price of ninety-six hundred, right? So if they're taking, if we allow them to raise six hundred per student, that puts them at twelve thousand dollars for their trip fund as a maximum. Do we think that a, a travel agency is going to cost more than twenty-eight percent of the trip?
Probably twenty-five, I would say.
I don't know.
I would assume.
Well, it's not, for me, the. Well, it's not, for me, the, the travel agent impact isn't strictly the cost impact of it. I, there's some benefits to having a travel agent from an administrative level. I, I mean, just from managing the trip. You know, the payments that have to go in, instead of having to cut fifteen different checks and get, you know, check requests from here and here and all these deadlines and the different things that people go through. So I'm sure it's more, when you, when you factor in the cost of administrator's time handling those types of things, you know, what, what does that cost? And I think that's probably something we don't want to be spending a lot of money on. But, you know, that being said, I'd rather see one or the other. Personally, I don't have a preference to which it is. If administration feels that it's really important, um, that, you know, for, for those reasons that you would prefer to have a travel agent after two to three nights, then I'm fine with that. I just wouldn't wanna see a cap. I would want the kids to be able to raise whatever they want to raise to go on the trips they want.
I, I think, you know what, you guys just tell us what you want us to put in because back in August before we did this, I actually specifically asked for the board to give us direction on what they wanted in this policy. And the response was, no, you guys do it and then we'll.
Yeah.
Phone on it.
Well, we needed something in front of us.
So, I mean, are we gonna go back to, first, are we gonna go back to policy again?
No, I, I mean, I, I'll make a motion here if you want.
You can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to move policy JJE dash R to second reading and with the elimination of, number eight, I guess is the easiest. I just wanted to make sure there weren't two number eights, the cap.
Motion made by Matt. We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
All more discussion.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. So the whole point in my mind of the cap is to give some direction and set a goal. You know, you, you, we say, you know, let them do as much fundraising as they want, you know, it's up to them to, to go out and sell as much as they want. But then when you look at a class raising thirty thousand dollars and only taking two-thirds of their class, it just doesn't add up for me. You, you, you look at these numbers, you know, the first one Dan said, with a, a class of twenty-five, they took twelve kids. You know, they could've taken every single kid at six thirty-seven per kid.
Can we find out from them why the rest didn't go though?
Right, there's, there's more than just the money.
There's, there's different factors.
Not the money.
Yeah, but there's the kids from two to fourteen, seven years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's different factors every year, John.
No, I understand.
You know, there's no set formula to it.
But the thing that money is the driver is the wrong driver. You're gonna get some kids that are just gonna go and you're gonna get some kids that don't go.
If less than half go, money was the driver.
I don't know. I don't think so.
Oh, well.
I personally don't think so. You know, my wife, my wife took my oldest daughter on a cruise to the Bahamas, the whole class, or they did, whoever was in it. And some kids didn't go. What kid doesn't wanna go to the Bahamas? But there were some that didn't wanna go. So I don't think it's a money driver. I think it's a personal preference driver. And you're gonna get some classes that are tight and you're gonna get some classes that are loose.
Yeah.
That's my theory on the.
That's what we're doing.
To argue, to argue, the counterpoint to that is at some point, someone launches or hatches the idea, let's go on a cruise. There's no way we can raise enough money for thirty people to go on a cruise, right?
They proved it.
Everybody in that class went on a cruise.
No, most of them did. I can get you a ratio of the number that didn't, but it was probably five out of thirty.
What we in the department are talking about, though, doesn't, wouldn't that be more on the group leader, like, kinda directing them in that direction? Like, kinda they did this time. The kids wanted to go to San Diego, and I think it was made evident that that probably was like out of the feasibility. You know, and they, and they're kinda driven by their advisors.
Sometimes, I think, yeah.
And the bottom line is, it's their trip, not ours. And I mean, that's the advocate. Wherever they wanna raise the money to get to go is where they should head, whether it's New York City, Boston.
And this policy as written states that there will be no trip if it falls under fifty-one, right? Is that what it is? So.
Well, that's community service.
Oh, that's a community service piece?
Yeah.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah, there's no percentage for fundraising. Set by every class separately.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Any more comments or discussion before we vote? All right, so just to be clear, we're voting on moving this policy forward to second reading with the omission of number eight.
Number eight, the cap.
No cap. All right, we have a motion from Matt. Who gave us the second?
I did.
Tony. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Nay.
Abstentions? All right, second read.
I do wanna say thank you to everybody. I, there was a number of us that have been on and off that committee through the last, I don't know, twenty-five years that we've discussed this, and I know it's been a lot of work and a lot of heartburn. And thank you to the public, too, that's given input.
And EH is just, we have some revisions due to change in law. Any questions on EH? I'm not sure we can change it anyway.
No. It is law.
It is law.
You can, it just takes a while. I'll make a motion to approve for second reading, policy EH, public use of school records.
I'll second.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Jasmine. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Abstentions? Next, we have board action. Do you have any nominations, resignations, recommendations?
No, I don't.
That's two meetings in a row. Um, policy DN, disposal procedure, we have parts of the gym floor.
Yeah, the big, um, what is it?
The lumberjack.
What's the lumberjack?
Oh, the center court.
I know when we replaced it, company that ripped it up, threw it in dumpsters, I know people were dumpster diving. It was no longer ours. People took parts of it, people took bleachers. That part, we saved because we thought it might be historic or nostalgic. It's got the lumberjack. I, I can't remember. I know we thought about hanging it, but it's really heavy. I, I guess, what's the recommendation? What, to do what with it?
What, what was it?
Well, what I'd like to see is put parts out, public lawn ticket for a day, and then rest it down.
Has it been any, has anybody come to you with any interest in this?
Not, not.
Okay, one person.
So we just make public notice that it's here and?
Well, I, I will, I mean, I, I could just throw it away.
I would say, I would, I don't know if I wanna throw that away.
Put it out to bid.
Yeah, I would make public notice, yeah.
Yeah, give a public notice, and then if, if there isn't something received, then.
What's the, what's the dimensions of that?
The, the only thing, the only thing is like the public's had an opportunity to, they've made the keychains and they've made multiple batches.
I'd put it out to bid.
Not the floor, not the lower.
The floor is.
That was the, yeah.
The sand.
Let's put it out to bid, see if we get any interest. And if we don't, then we can disclose it. The cost, you can put it out to bid, doesn't it?
Now, where is it now?
Public auction?
Is it in your office?
Garage, taking up a whole bit.
Can we just, we'll give a short timeline. Is there anything in the policy that says what the timeline has? Can we give like a week's, a week posting?
A year.
Yeah. Ooh.
I mean, homecomings coming up, we could have.
Raffle it up.
I, I don't know that, we're not gonna get more people at an event for quite a while.
Is it in one piece or is it taken apart?
It's all taken apart.
Oh, it is?
Individual ones?
Yeah, it's almost.
How many pieces roughly?
Well, basically what it is, they cut the sections out and when we did the circle, it's in six pieces so we can lift it. And then we have, oh gee, this must be another eight sections of floor that we capped with the idea that we're gonna make keychains and all this other stuff and sell it and make some money back on the thing. And that, actually, that went along.
But we're still selling those.
Yeah.
But that's what we have.
Yeah. So we have, I mean, you could, we can make notice of it tomorrow. We have, um, homecoming this weekend, and we can put signs up, you know, letting people know that it's available.
See the old lumberjack.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need, we don't need somebody over there manning it.
Get your picture taken.
But I think that's probably the perfect opportunity. If no one is interested, then we junk it. But at least that we don't junk it and then somebody should come back and say, hey, I would've, I would've loved that.
Well, if at least, if it's at least on display for people to see, then we can have a date, get your bid in by.
Sound job, bid in a box, the box I said. One guy drops a monolire.
Bring it to JJB.
The cheapest way to get rid of it. That's fine.
Do we have to vote to do that? Judy?
On display.
I mean, I would, just to make sure you have it in the record.
I'll make a motion to post for one week the availability of the old center court from the old gym, the linwood lumberjack.
And flooring.
And flooring.
All of it.
All of it. Can't just take one. And then if we don't receive anything, we can.
And to post for bids?
Post for bids.
By date of?
Or just interest. I mean, I, interest, I mean, you give it away.
Yeah.
You know, bids or interest.
So what is the motion saying?
We have many, we pull it out of the hat.
I put, I put it a bid for one week, and then after that, then we can, next meeting, we can.
Well, the point is.
You suppose.
Out of the way.
No.
So if there's no bids.
I'm just throwing everything away.
If there's no bids after a week, just throw it away.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we do.
I mean, someone could bid zero if they wanted to, but put in a bid.
As long as they take it with them.
Right, as long as they.
I'll make a motion to not let my husband know about this.
How much is it worth to you?
He should've got, he should've gotten.
All right, so Matt's made a motion to display the lumberjack for one week and for bids. Bids due.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we need to put it together and display it.
Just say it's available.
That, that it's available, that's a lot of work.
Mark and I are spending time in the apartment.
Yeah, we have other things to do.
All right.
Not we.
So where will we post this?
In the regular places we post. Just posted on the town.
All right, we need a date for bids due, next Wednesday?
Regular online.
End of business day, October third.
Yeah.
Post for bid, bids due, end of the business day, October third. Motion by Matt, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, John.
Wednesday, Wednesday's the fourth. Cause he said a week, Monday.
Sorry, Wednesday the fourth. Motion by Matt, second by John. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Abstentions? School calendar, you guys wanna make November fifteenth early dismissal for teacher conferences?
Yeah, for some reason, that has always been in the calendar. And when we were, we were planning our, our parent conferences this year, um, the date was not there. So that's Educational Week. It's American Education.
Every year. I feel like we vote to do this every year.
We just forgot to put it in this calendar this year. This was the first time. I know you voted on other days, half days before. But this one, it was not in the calendar. It is the National Education Week, and that's on Wednesday is when they have their, half day for parent conferences.
So it usually is listed on the school calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
So typically, how's the attendance for those parent teacher conferences when we do them early?
Well, the teach, elementary is booked.
It's booked.
I was booked.
Yeah, you are. Okay, I just wanna make sure. I know, especially in a resort town, a lot of people work at night, um, so it may be beneficial, but a lot of people would look at that and say, well, why would you do it? Everybody works till five. But that's on, they could see her, so. I just wonder. Thank you.
Any more discussion or question? I'll accept a motion to allow administration to make remember fifteenth and early release day for the purposes of parent teacher conferences.
I'll do the motion.
Thanks, Tony.
I'll second.
Thanks, Erin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Abstentions? New business, Judith, you have some policy back to hand out for review?
Yes, I do.
So as everyone knows, we got, not we, Judith got a letter of complaint about board members' behavior or actions. And these are a large number of policies that address obligations, responsibilities, ethics, powers of administrators and board members. Judith, how you recommend we do this? Go through each policy?
Right, well, these, these were the policies that, that the board, you know, does need to be aware of. And the first one's aligned in staff relations, and that just, that explains the chain of command and the flow of communication and how that, that falls through with. And the BHC, which is your board staff communication, reviews the staff communication to the board, the board communication to staff, and visits to the school as well as social interaction. And does specifically give procedures that board members need to follow.
It does say under visits to school, individual board members interested in visiting our school or classrooms will inform the superintendent of such visits, make arrangements for visitations through the principal. Any inspections, that's in quotations, or visits for supervisory or administrative purposes. Oh, sorry, um, such visits would be regarded as informal, not for inspections.
Correct.
Official visits by board members will be carried on under board authorization and with full knowledge of the superintendent and principal.
Your school board member ethics, the BCA, that was one that, that we give out every year and board members sign off on it.
Number nine is a good point, recognize that no individual board member has authority to speak or act for the entire board except as specifically designated to do so by board action. Ten addresses not taking private action that will compromise the board or administration and refrain from private actions which undermine or compromise board action. This was a policy that we were given first night of board year.
Work.
DCA was next in your packet. That's school board member ethics. That one's pretty, that was the one we just did, sorry.
Says BDAA is your board member authority.
Pretty clear, our authority as a board member is limited to participating in actions taken by a board as a whole when legally in session.
And policy CF does, um, going to the school building, that's written.
And so CFA dash R, the duties of the principal, that goes along with CF?
CFA.
CFA dash R.
Right, CFA dash R goes along with, oh yeah, it could go along with CF, but it, it does go along with CFA.
Correct. Do board members have specific questions or comments or concerns about complaints against a board member?
Yeah, I, yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I think it's, um, it's pretty clear. Our role as a board is to set policy to be used as a guideline, which filters down through the superintendent. And if we, I know that we all receive complaints, whether it's through regular talk here and there or people coming, or leading us different places, all that sort of stuff. If you ever receive any of that, that needs to go to Judy so that she can give it to the appropriate party. And that way, you protect yourselves and you protect the rest of us. If anybody, board member ever wanted to go into a building to look at something, ask for us to, we can vote out at a school board meeting and do that as a group. And that, that way it ensures that, you know, we're all protected because we don't supervise anybody other than Judy. We do Judy's performance evaluation, so.
I know a lot of us are approached by community members or sometimes maybe even staff members. I just think it's so easy to get caught up in a conversation as a listener, just, I'm not saying we have to be rude. I think it's important that we know that sometimes. sometimes listening gives someone the impression that you're actively involved in the discussion, you just need to direct them to Judy. I think that saves us a lot of trouble. Just to cover what Matt said.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
On the packet, the first one, the reason why I flipped at that one, the line staff, I believe it says, the line staff, yeah, at relations, even when teachers may come to me and/or community members may come to me, and if they haven't gone to the cla, if it's a classroom teacher, if they haven't gone to the classroom teacher, I do not have a conversation with them because I have to follow the same chain of command, because otherwise, they don't get to go through the steps of due process.
Yeah, I think it's important when dealing with any complaints that we, we may get, I think I've said this in the past, that there's a lot of value, I think, in, in telling that person who is giving you a complaint, you know what, I understand, but you really need to go to that building administrator. If someone goes to Matt or Erin or whoever, and when it finally gets back to the correct employee, that employee hasn't gotten anything really from a party that was involved, they're hearing from a board member who told a administrator, so I think just encourage community members, if you have a complaint, bring it straight to the building administrator first, so let them know there's a chain of command to follow.
Yeah, I just wanna add, kind of piggyback from what you guys said, when we look at the BDAA, the board member authority, the second line says, board members shall not assume responsibilities of administrators or other staff members, and I think that's, you know, that kind of hits at what we're dealing with in this situation. It, it's all about knowing our role, and that's something I've been harping on my whole time on this school board, you know, people have had misconstrued what the roles are of themselves as a board member or a particular committee of the board, and that's what can get us in trouble, you know, we have one employee as a board that reports to us and it's Judy, and everything filters down from there, it, it should not be taken upon us, even as a full board, let alone as individual members of the board, to be overseeing the work of any employee of this school in any capacity and question it in any capacity. And I think it's, it's a very simple thing, if we read through the policies and know what the role of a school board member is, then we can avoid any violations of that and move forward in a positive way.
It, it has to be that way, there's, I think we've all worked in circumstances where maybe we had a boss but felt like we had five bosses, and organizations, whether they're corporations, small business, whatever it is, cannot function in that manner, you know, it doesn't have to be strict hierarchy, but in this case, in the public school district, it, it does, but employees need to know who they report to and need to know who has direction over them, because it, it's, it really, it could, it could be a real cultural issue, and then we could lose trust from, from the whole school community when we're trying to oversee the board that, you know, that we're doing things we're not supposed to do.
I agree. Any other comments or questions of actual board member behavior? If not, we can move on. Okay, so I just wanna be clear, we need to, we're not inspecting buildings as board members unless the board has taken a vote and authorized a, a member or a committee or a group to do so, and any complaints you receive from other parties, community members, faculty members, try to direct them to administration, if they don't feel comfortable, go to administration, but that's, that's the extent of what we're doing.
Let me, can I touch on that, one part you mentioned, the faculty too, as a school board member, if we were to receive a complaint from a faculty member directly and that never went to a school administrator through Judy, we would be culpable to insubordination.
Correct.
I mean, we would be responsible for that, because we didn't say you need to go back to the proper parties, and that's, you know, not only something that we could be reprimanded for, but that's a fireable offense for, for people that work, work here, if they're not following their proper chain, so you just have to, it's a small town, we have to be very careful, know what our, what our guidance is and our role is, and, and do everything you can to put people in touch with the right people.
And if whatever's happening ends up being disciplinary in terms of where administration goes, if we knew ahead of time or had information or investigated anything on our own, we have to be removed from the situation when being informed by, by administration. Okay? Is that it? School board audit questionnaire, we did that publicly last meeting, there was a copy in our packet, if anyone get the updated copy?
Okay.
Typed up with what we had done, Judy had attached some policies that correlate with some of the questions we had, specifically board member conflict of interest, school board member ethics, couple other ones in there, did anyone have any questions? I know the question that was, the question in question, if that makes sense, was number three on the first page, does the board adopt, I'm sorry, not that one, number four. Actually, where is it? We had one about doing business.
Yeah, that's four.
Four.
Related party transactions.
Do you have any related party or of yours had any interest, direct or indirect with the, oh, no, it wasn't that one. Oh, sorry, it's number three, I'm sorry. Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow? The answer was yes, please furnish a copy, under that it says, if yes, does this document prevent elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity? We had some questions on whether or not something like that existed. So, BCB is that policy, board member conflict of interest. When I read through this, it actually changes my opinion on that answer, we've got yes put, the third paragraph says, it is not the intent of this policy to prevent the district from contracting with corporations or businesses with which a board member is an employee. So it talks about being careful and the things we need to look out for, but it doesn't prohibit that from happening. So the second part of number three was, if yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity? I would say the answer is actually no, but I don't know what you guys think. The word used is prohibit, and I don't believe that policy does prohibit. Policy definitely dances around it, and here's, here's on the side of caution, but it goes out of its way to say it does not prevent business from happening. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, we just need to change that answer to no. Would anyone disagree? No. And Brian, that was actually the one that you had questioned, right?
Yeah, it's, I just thought, I don't have any interest, but if some...
Right, no, but, that was a good find.
...bid on a project to do something, and I think as long as they're not involved in that board.
Right, because you have to define business, I mean, we have board members who sometimes bid on things that they sell.
Yeah, that, that's why, they just look out.
Yeah, so we're gonna, so we just need to change...
So if we can change the second part of number three to no, and then I'll stop by this week and, and sign the copy, because that would be the only change we have to make, correct?
So you have a motion for us to authorize you, right, sign for the board?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to give the authority to Chairman Pickering to sign the board member questionnaire with the correction of question three, second question shift, change to no on behalf of the board, if that made sense, does that make sense?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tony. Motion by Matt, second by Tony, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, extensions? Staff, Mrs. Morris, how are you?
Woo, I'm good.
I just wanna say you answered, you delivered the committee report well, if you decide to retire anytime soon, I think you should run for the school board, and you can give many committee reports.
Yes, I'm good. Okay, Heather Krill reports that on October 11th, our high school students will be attending IU at Jean's Playhouse for a special afternoon matinee. We will also begin some of our now favorite Linwood speaking traditions, including the Rotary Speech Project, along with Poetry Out Loud. Dates are on the school calendar, and we are always looking for judges, please let us know if you are interested. And Ms. McGinley sent me this great link, and so I printed it out for her, she did this Harvey project, I'll make enough copies, figured you guys could share, but I'll just summarize, Ms. McGinley's adulting class did a Hurricane Harvey project, a drive, and they collected thirty-eight sacks of supplies, they, she reached out to Boys and Girls Club in Houston and asked what they would specifically need, and we collected young adult books, flashlights, batteries, flavored packets for water, and then the common man shipped it, so that was a great, that was a great project that they did. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Kristy.
You're welcome.
Community, any comments?
What are the lines gonna get painted on the new basketball court for the four-square?
I don't know, I believe that's...
...on the big selling point and everything.
I believe that's currently in the process of getting going.
The line's what?
I believe so. Mark?
They offered them the paint, I told them if someone would light it out, it would get painted, but it's up to someone to actually light it all, what they want, what it to look like.
Okay.
So, does that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, maybe someone can...
Yeah, we can just get the take.
Okay. Bobby, do you have a question or a comment?
I have a question about other trips that don't have any guidelines or limitations to them, like interact, the DC trip, Bahamas trip, adapt.
I don't have the answer for you on that, we're, we worked on that one policy, I would agree with you that we need to look at an overall trip policy that uses similar guidelines. No, that doesn't answer a question, but I, I agree.
Because in the meantime, they can just do whatever.
Correct.
Fund, fundraise however they choose.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, it's something I think policy should look at.
I don't think we should, we didn't change the fundraising policy, you know?
No, just the class trip.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm saying there are other trips that exist within...
Oh, I know that, yeah, I know, but you said fundraising, so I thought that maybe...
No, because they fundraise as part of the trips that they take, but you have their own guidelines.
Yeah, I agree, we need to look at it and we will soon.
Okay.
Pat, do you have a comment?
Yeah, it's just informational for you, trustees in Woodstock, in preliminary discussions to move the capital reserve funds, possibly move the capital reserve funds to another bank.
Remember you mentioned that a while back?
I'm sorry?
I thought you mentioned that a while back.
Well, we, we were thinking about it, but we've actually sat down and talked to a bank now. The problem is the citizens has forced us into an online banking system and told us that we no longer have a direct government banking representative anymore, that we have to call a call center, and we have a problem with having to call a call center and getting Peggy wherever Peggy may be. So, we're in, like I said, very preliminary talks, and the bank that we've talked to has said they could probably increase our annual yield on the money that we have, other than the point-three percent that we're getting is just a basic interest rate with citizens, but we'll always have several people that we can go directly to.
Can I ask you a question without the answer being identified? Are you looking at local banks still?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, it has to be a New Hampshire bank, has to be a bank that's, that's approved by the state to take care of municipalities.
Yep.
That was one of the things, you know, so, I mean, it narrows it down, so you can all just do the math and figure it out, but, the problem is we don't wanna have to mail deposits someplace, we don't have to wanna, you know, right now, we like certain things about citizens, but we don't like the fact that we don't have a direct representative to call anymore.
Correct.
It's not a done deal like any, we just, we just got some printed documentation that my cohort who's been in banking is going over and we'll get together and decide.
Okay.
As to what we're gonna do, but it would take, the big part of this is that, in order to get the yield that talks about getting, is that money would always be available, which is not a problem for the school, because typically, you ask us once a year for money, and I can tell them that in June, we need our funds available for whatever they're gonna do, other than that, the town is a little bit more difficult, because, and one of the things that I learned is we, we call the trustees of the trust funds, but, and the school calls them trust funds, but they're not trust funds, the only thing that you have as a trust fund is that money that came from the library.
The principal.
All right, because somebody willed that to the government agency, and we're managing that, but everything else is, is technically a capital reserve fund.
So is there any action that we need to take?
I'm sorry?
Is there any action we need to take?
You don't, no, you don't, and like, like I said, I, and, I wanna say this, but I don't wanna seem like I'm being arrogant, we don't need your permission, the trustees, we can do whatever we want, we don't have to go to the selectmen, we don't have to go to you, we don't have to ask anybody's permission, we just think it's right and appropriate to tell you that we might be looking at something, and we'll keep you informed as we go along.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And as, as a cooperative district...
I'm sorry?
As a cooperative district years ago, this district, because we don't elect, we don't have our own trustees of the trust fund for the school district, the towns do, so at whatever meeting years ago, the district said, the town of Woodstock trustees of the trust fund will be the school's trustees of the trust.
Lincoln, Lincoln got certain things, Woodstock got certain things.
Yeah.
So the Woodstock trustees are the ones that take care of the school's capital reserve funds, so, but, you know, like I, like I said, I, I don't wanna sound arrogant, we don't need your permission, but we're gonna, we're gonna come in here and at least inform you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna keep this up to date.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Matt, give you a second.
Second.
Thanks, Jasmine, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, extensions? Thank you, everybody.